Okay, I'll call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside's Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, January 21st, 2021, our first one of the year. Please call the roll.
President Salz.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Evans. Trustee Evans. I think.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Gallagos. Is Trustee Gallagos not here?
He's here.
He's just muted.
He's muted.
How about that? I'm here.
Thank you. Trustee Hannan.
I'm here.
Trustee Jisa.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Kaylee.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, to a new year, fresh start for everybody. If, do we have any public comment tonight? Do we know? Say.
We did not receive any emails and there was nothing in the lockbox at 5:00 this afternoon.
I'm just looking here. Okay, right, we do get them here. Okay, we'll move on then to reports of village officers. The first up tonight is my report. I have before you a motion to appoint Colin Hughes to the Riverside TV Commission to fill a term to a vacancy to expire in 2021, and a motion to appoint Matthew Seymour to the Preservation Commission to fill a vacancy, a term to expire 2021. You have their applications in front of you as part of your packet, and I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the nominations.
Motion on both.
Motion by Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
Second one, Ms. Collins. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Motion carries. So I'm delighted, especially delighted with these two appointments this evening. Matt's going to be going on to the Preservation Commission, which is where I started my service for the Village of Riverside over 15 years ago. And so I have a very soft spot in my heart for the Preservation Commission. And Colin returns to us as now a Commissioner after having been on the production crew for Riverside TV. So they're both, they're both uniquely qualified. I'm very pleased that they're here. This is, this is the first time we've tried this. So we're, we're going to do this virtually, the swearing in. So I will turn it over to Clerk Kaylee.
Okay. So gentlemen, if you would each raise your right hand and then repeat after me, you'll each have an opportunity to state your name and the commission that you're being appointed to. So I.
I.
Hi. Please state your name.
Matthew Seymour.
Colin Hughes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of.
Preservation Commissioner.
Riverside TV Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. Look forward to working with you very much.
Thank you, too.
So the only other thing I have on my, on my list tonight, Mr. Hannan earlier today brought up an issue that he, that he would like us all to talk about, and that is whether the board would like to resume in-person meetings come February. So I'll just toss it open to the trustees and hear your thoughts. President Salz, it might be a good time for me to. Oh, I'm sorry. For the record. I forgot about that. Yeah, okay. Sure, no problem. So President Salz is head of the, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Riverside has made a determination that due to the ongoing public health emergency and consistent with the governor's most recent emergency declaration, various executive orders entered by the governor and the recent amendments made to the Open Meetings Act and Public Act 101640, that this meeting will be conducted electronically. Trustees or anyone else, if at any time you're having trouble hearing any, anyone each other, please, please let us know so that we can make sure that everything runs smoothly. Thank you. That, and you know, this would probably be a good time for me to say this as well. We, we have been having some now and then I'll see a little flash on my, my computer that says my connection is unstable, which I kind of take personally every time I see it. But it should, should for some reason I lose you guys tonight, I'll ask Mr. Pollock if he'll step in and chair until I can reconnect. Okay, so Mr. Hannan, would you like to give us your thoughts about the in-person meeting?
Yeah, and, and this request or this observation is just based on the assumption that we're moving down the tiers supposedly tomorrow with moving down a tier that will allow at least some semblance of indoor dining. One thing I really like about the meetings is, you know, seeing the interaction among the trustees, having the residents come in when they address us and have that face-to-face contact. Obviously, there's a sensitivity that we don't want to put anybody at risk, but as we move down the tiers, continuing with our sort of face mask use, you know, one thing that I thought was very important to, you know, the, the board is, is that personal interaction. So want to make sure that we move to that as, as, as quickly as we can, given, you know, everyone's safety in mind.
Ben, you're on mute.
Sorry. Any other thoughts?
I, I have a thought. So just for me personally, until I understand the tiers and I understand the importance of the in-person meetings, but I sort of feel like from a safety perspective, again, just for me and my family and the people that I'm around, I'm still very disciplined in interacting with folks and keeping things down until the vaccinations are, are out and readily available, I would prefer to continue to do the Zoom meetings, but, you know, or at least have the alternative to the option to, to operate from a Zoom. I don't know if that's even possible, but I'm still a little bit fearful personally. And I just, I think that we're so close to the finish line with the vaccines, or at least what we think, that for me, my, my opinion would be to just continue it until we, we are all safe and have those vaccines and are completed.
Anybody else? Is that it?
Yeah, I, I think that Zoom meetings are better for us as far as interacting with each other and with residents in comparison to the auditorium. There's just many, many issues with the sound in the auditorium. So there's some downside to being in person, and that's a really big one for me. I just really can't hear what everyone's saying. So that's the only reason I would want to stick with the Zoom meetings until we can get back in the smaller room.
Anybody else? Mr. Pollock?
I, I agree with Trustee Hannan that having in-person meetings is much, much better. But I think we should err on the side of caution and especially if we're not all comfortable with it. And therefore I would say we continue for the time being on Zoom.
Trustee Collins and Gallagos, your thoughts?
Would there be a way to do a mixed, so that those who want to be in person could be and others could be Zoom? Or is it all or nothing?
Yeah, I'll defer that to Jessica. My understanding is, is it can be done, but it would just be more complicated on staff to do it and Riverside TV to do it. Because they'd have to be trying to cover two venues at once.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be sensitive to those people who aren't comfortable with it. Personally, it, I'm open to whichever. It doesn't matter to me.
Mr. Gallagos?
I do see Trustee Hannan's point about having in-person meetings. However, I would also want to play it safe for everyone else. I did Mr. Meeting in August where I had to phone it in. It was not easy for me to hear and participate in that mixed type of setting. So let's play it safe. Let's look at it again in February, see what the numbers are and see how everyone's comfortable at that point. I do want to get back to them, but maybe not chuck the guns over.
Okay, so it seems like a pretty firm consensus. Well, I mean, I, I think all of us share Mr. Hannan's desire to get back together again. My own person, my, the only thing that I, that I'm very, and I, this, I agree with Trustee Evans. I have a very hard time hearing in the auditorium. And in many ways, at least, at least in this format, we can see one another's face, you know, as opposed to be, being hiding behind a, you know, our mask. So we'll, we'll, at least for the first meeting in February, we'll keep it like this and we'll just keep monitoring it as the vaccine starts to roll out and people get a better sense of personal safety. So that's all I have for my report. Manager Francis?
Thank you, President Salz. I have a couple of items to report on, so if you'll just bear with me. I don't know how many of our residents do monitor our website and our COVID-19 page, but there's a lot of information on it, and I would strongly encourage everyone to take a look at it. We do roll out things on social media as well. As soon as we get updates from both the state and the county, we then push that out on those different forums. The most recent update was, included the announcement with regard to the different vaccine locations, one being in North Riverside at the Cook County Health's, North Riverside Health Center, and that's located at 1800 South Harlem Avenue. It's by appointment only. You can find additional details on our website. Essentially, it's Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. One item to note is that they will begin Phase 1B vaccinations on January 25th. But once again, it includes, you must have an appointment for those different items. Some additional information to provide both the board and the public is currently based on Illinois Department of Public Health's website, 1% of Cook County's population has been fully vaccinated. So that's good information. And then with regard to Region 10, which Riverside is part of that region within the state, our seven-day positivity rate is 7.9%, and that's as of January 18th. So we are trending in the right direction. That's in comparison to January 8th, when we were at 10% for the seven day. I wanted to make sure that residents were aware of that information. Additionally, I wanted to announce to the public that the villages were a member of Irma, which is our risk management pool. And in late December, the village's balance being held in Irma's excess surplus fund surpassed $1 million. We're now $1 million, $47,439. Our fund balance grew at the end of 2020 by $231,656. If you may recall, the village first started building this balance back in 2014. Prior to this, our balance was zero, and any interest income was used to offset the village's contribution. So that is a huge success of the village to then have access to those reserves potentially in the future. I also wanted to make mention of different roles that department heads will be taking on with our different intergovernmental collaborations that we have. For Chief Weitzel, he will be co-chair of Fight Crime Investing Kids Illinois Legislative Committee Member for Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, legislate, legislative member for West Suburban Chiefs of Police Association, Chairperson of MAD Illinois Enforcement Committee, Chairperson of Illinois Impaired Driving Task Force, current parliamentarian of, for the West Suburban Chief of Police. He's currently the Board President for the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, and he's also an operating board member and the Chair of the Operating Board of the West Central Consolidated Communications Center. Director Johns is currently the alternate for WASSRA. Director Mel Kioti is currently the WASSRA delegate and is also Chair of the Policy Committee for WASSRA. Director Tab is currently the GIS Consortium Delegate. Chief Buckley is currently an operating board member for West Central Consolidated Communications Center, and also may, he is the MABUS Division 10 Vice President. I will also be continuing my roles as, I'm currently the past Chair for the West Central Consolidated Communications Center and will continue on as a board member and Vice Chair for the Dispatch Center. I am also continuing as the Treasurer for the West Central Cable Agency. For Irma, I'm the past Chair of the Board of Directors, the Nominating Committee Chair for the Board of Directors, and also the Village Delegate on the Board of Directors. And finally, I will continue to assume the role on the North Suburban Employee Benefits Cooperative as the Delegate for the Village of Riverside. So I wanted to make mention of that. We join these organizations, we become part of it, and usually it's due to cost-saving measures that the village does, but also it's very important to make sure that we're active and advocates for different benefits that the village receives. Finally, I have an announcement with regard to the Fire Department and promotions I would like to announce. And we will have a formal swearing-in ceremony at a later date, once we are able to meet in person. But the following promotions are effective immediately. Jim Mulligan is being, has been promoted to Deputy Fire Chief. Ray Williamson Battalion Chief for Station 2, and Dan Tab Battalion Chief for Station 1. And I just want to congratulate them and Chief Buckley on his promotions of his new team. That is all I have for this evening.
Congratulations to all. It's wonderful. I, as you were reading the list, I was just trying to figure out when Chief Weitzel has time to be Chief of Police.
I have the time.
All right, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Bear with me. It's kind of a long one tonight. On the consent agenda this evening, ratify the voucher list of bills for December 31, 2020, and January 7, 2021. Approve the voucher list of bills for January 21, 2021. The Quarterly Purchase Order Report. Approve the Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes for December 17, 2020. Review and file the following: The Economic Development Commission Meeting Minutes of November 12, 2020. Landscape Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes, October 13, 2020. Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes, November 23, 2020. The Community Development and Finance Department, November Monthly Reports. The Community Development, Finance, Fire, Police, and Public Works Departments, December. In ordinance to provide for nonparticipation by the Village of Riverside in certain assessment relief provided by the Property Tax Code for historic buildings and for certain residences, resident structures within the Riverside Landscape Architectural District. Resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into agreements and various purchase orders for fiscal years 2020 and 2021. A resolution to establish an additional Illinois Funds Bank account for the purpose of segregating motor-pulled tax funds for the Village of Riverside. A resolution extending Families First Coronavirus Response Act benefits. A resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a member community agreement and consent to license of GIS data to GIS Consortium and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District to access and share GIS data. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of $50,000 for 2021 maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. A resolution amending Section 4.40 of the Village of Riverside Employee Manual relative to substance abuse. Motion to approve a WSSRA Board Representative and Alternative, alternate. And lastly, a motion to accept the 2021 budget document, which has been provided to the board as a separate document. Does anyone need any of these items removed for discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
Motion made.
Motion by Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
And Mr. Pollock, please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? And then we'll move on. First up is an update on completed policing mandates and police department self-initiated criminal justice projects. Chief Weitzel.
Thank you. A good evening, President Salz, trustees, Manager Francis. So I wanted to come back and report to the board, our officials, the manager and our, the community, what's happened since our August 2020 community conversation that we had. Because at that meeting, those of you that were there or those that remember, at the very end of the meeting, I told those in attendance that some of the information we gave out and we talked about that we had not completed yet, that we, I would report back to the president, the board, and the residents. So this is my opportunity to do that because it's taken some time for us to reach some of these mandates. Some of it is due to COVID, and some of it's due just to lengthy paperwork. So as you remember, the community meeting was held in August. There were individuals that either sent us emails with questions. Some showed up that night with three-by-five cards and submitted them, and there were those residents that went to the podium and spoke. And some of the issues I said I would follow up on was the 10 shared principles. I had mentioned that over six months ago. We have now fully adopted that. What that is, is the Illinois Association of the Chiefs of Police and the NAACP developed a 10 shares principles. It's voluntary for police agencies to sign and to train and mentor their employees. We've done that. Every single one of my sworn and civilian employees have signed that document, have been trained in it, have sworn to those items listed, and I have purchased large posters for my facility and have them in the process of being framed and put in the roll call room, and we can go back in the roll call room and in the locker room so that the officers see those 10 principles every day. I will tell you, there's over 180 police agencies in Illinois that have signed that document. And on, on first glance, it might look pretty simplistic to you. It might be like, you know, every police officer should have these principles. And I would say you're right. This is just a way for us to reaffirm that these are the principles we've had. We've discussed them with our officers, and we let our residents know that these are principles that guide us in our policing. So those have been fully adopted. And then we went on to the federal requirements. So there was a federal presidential mandate put out that said you had to become federally certified for your use of force policy and other policies if you wanted to continue to receive federal grant funding. So any agency that decided to opt out of that, this, the federal government can cut 40% of your grant funding. So needless to say, most agencies have done that. That was a project that was handled by my Deputy Chief, Bill Gatchick. It took him probably about four months to get the proofs in. So what we had to do is we had to prove our policies, our procedures. We had to prove that we taught them. We had to prove that officers signed off on them. We had to submit information to our insurance carrier. They had to certify certain documents. There was a lot of back and forth that went on. So we were certified in late December, and we were one of the first 20 agencies in Illinois to be certified. That letter's in your packet. How that works is the federal government picks an agency in every state. It is the governing board, and then that governing board will report that back to the federal government. In Illinois, the Illinois Association of the Chiefs of Police is the governing agency, and all those documents are kept at the Illinois Chief's main office, and every three years we will recertify. That, that was a project exclusively handled by Deputy Chief Gatchick. He did a great job. I also wanted to let you know that under Deputy Chief Gatchick's supervision, we were certified by Lexipol, which is our general order of policy development documents, that we are gold standard. Now, that's a, that's, that's through our insurance carrier. So initially, we got a grant funded by Irma, gave us a grant back many years ago to go with this Lexipol development policy and procedures. They gave us a 50% matching grant, and we're 99% in compliance. And really, the 1% in compliance is because I had officers that were off this year, either on medical leave or injured on duty. As soon as they are back to duty, we will, we will submit again, and we will be 100%. But we're in the top 3% of Lexipol agencies with the gold standard. That project was also handled by Deputy Chief Gatchick. And then I want you, I talked about some juvenile matters at our public meeting. So we entered another agreement on juvenile, handling of juvenile cases. That's something that's been in front of this board before, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, because there's one significant improvement. I dealt with the director, and I asked if we could get a response from youth outreach to the village. So they have now said that they will make it, come to our facility if need be and accompany our officers to homes or apartments in Riverside on follow-ups within 24 hours. That was not in our previous agreement. So I really pushed for that, and I would have liked it more than 24 hours, but, but because of the organization that there are, that's what they can do for us. But it does allow a significant follow-up with our residents and families that would need the youth outreach services that they can accompany an officer, which has never been done before. So that is, that was in effect as of late October, early November. So moving on from that, the mental health update. There was a lot of talk at our presentation about mental health issues. I want you to know where we stand in that. We've had a lot of discussions with the township. I just did a Zoom meeting last night with the Township Mental Health Board. They are going to fund, give us some funding for different training. They're also going to fund what are called street cards. So the township has agreed to print up these professional cards that the officers can carry in their squad car that are resource cards. So in the middle of the night, whenever we run into a situation on a mental health issue that's not violent, that maybe a family's looking for a referral, or maybe somebody's looking for a referral, we're going to have that available. They're printing up 300 of them, and they're going to be distributing them to Riverside. And I've also asked them to distribute them to Brookfield and North Riverside, our partners, and they've agreed to do that. That's going to be funded by the township. In that same vein, I'm also still working on legislation in Springfield. State Representative Mike Zaleski has been very supportive of that. Unfortunately, it didn't move. So those of you that have been following that recent legislation in Springfield, I'm still working my way through that 764-page document, but the legislation that was under police reform, we initially had mental health funding in there. It did not make it into that final document. But I've been assured that it's going to be, continue to be pushed for what are called health response teams. And we're going to start those off regionally, and it's just too expensive to have every individual department have their own mental health professional. But the, the model we're going to file, file is regional. So that is still on the forefront. It's still being pushed by Representative Zaleski. And the Illinois Chiefs have signed on to that. The Illinois Sheriff's Association has signed on, and so have many, many mental health professionals in our area. Pillars Organization is in support of that. And they spoke about that last night in front of the Township Mental Health Board. I might, a couple of the other projects, I wanted to make sure I mentioned the pandemic in the Prairies. I did. I did that with the two sheriffs, office sheriffs, one from Nebraska and one from New York State. I was asked to participate in that for one reason only. They found out about our MOU with our Consolidated Dispatch Center for, during the pandemic, for sharing services. That's what brought my name, because I'm not, I was the only non-sheriff that participated in that webinar. And since that webinar took place, I've had 32 requests for our MOU. All of those 32 requests have come from sheriff agencies. In addition to that, I had 12 other agencies in Illinois that asked for that. So I just wanted to make a mention that I thank the president and the board and the manager for supporting that. And I want to thank our village attorney, Michael Mars, because this board allowed him to work on that document. This board allowed us to spend dollars to get that document printed, and that document is being widely And that document is being widely used by other agencies, and it's being modeled. So I wanted I wanted to thank both the board and Michael for that, because I think it's something that we can share with other agencies moving forward, and it's a fantastic document. My final two things is I recently did a partnership in policing through the LaGrange Women Voters Association. I probably got the name wrong, but I was asked to participate in this partnership in policing only because of our program in August. So I got a call from their organization and said that they saw our presentation that went on in the auditorium. And they asked me to participate specifically because of the program we put onto our residents. I was on there, and so was Chief Brian King from Hinsdale, and then there were many other social service providers that were on there, including Beds Plus and Pillars. So we were able to talk about issues surrounding police diversity, collaboration, equity, recruiting, retention. It was attended by over 100 people on Zoom, or that's the maximum they could take in. And since then, I've continued to get emails from residents to ask them questions. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, because I know President Sells was really the one pushing our community meeting, and I wanted I wanted you to know the only reason they reached out to me is because they viewed back and they saw it. They thought it was a good program, and they wanted me to join that specifically because of that reason. So those are the initiatives. I wanted to make sure I reported back, because I when I left that meeting, I told residents that attended that I would report back. And I so I want to make sure that the board, the president, and the manager, our residents, know that I just wasn't giving rhetoric. It's taken since August to do this, but we've achieved this. And it certainly was not myself. I want the board to know that my deputy chief and my operations lieutenant were involved in every step of the way, and so was my administrative assistant Pamela McCall. So this was not only Tom Weitzel's initiative. It was board directives and our residents directives, what they wanted to see. And the command staff has delivered that to our officers and to the residents. So if you have any questions, I would add, I would be happy to answer. If not, I just wanted to update the board.
Any questions for Chief Weitzel? Mr. Hannan?
Yeah, President Sells, I just want to say how impressed I am by by that summary. You know, that meeting, you know, that President Sells put together, chief, that you participated in, I think, was well received. And just to, you know, have that type of follow-up and hear, you know, especially the the mental health cards, I think that's a giant step in addressing some of the concerns that that were raised. You know, I know you had concerns that that summer meeting, that your your resources for that were limited. I'm just impressed that you took those affirmative steps, you and your department, to address those potential issues and found a solution or some type of solution for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add to that. I mean, I think, as usual, Chief Weitzel is being modest in his comments. You know, with that, when the the meeting we had in August, if you all think back and remember the tenor of the time, that at that point last year, it was it was a really wonderful thing to see how readily Chief Weitzel embraced the opportunity to meet with our residents at a time when things were very difficult. And I really appreciated that he and his command staff, it really, they did not participate reluctantly. They welcomed the opportunity to meet with our residents. And that and that that kind of conversation has has blossomed into the things that Chief Weitzel has has just mentioned. Shows the importance of of talking to one another and having that ongoing conversation between our police force and and our community. The I think the the youth, the youth outreach that Chief Weitzel just mentioned is is extraordinary, and I agree with Mr. Hannan, as is the the mental health component. It's really important that we find ways to take those kind of pressures off of our off of our sworn police officers, so that they can spend their time doing what their primary duty is, which is keeping us all safe. So Chief Chief Weitzel, you you continue to make us all proud, and I really appreciate what you do for our village.
Thank you. I would like to know if I could make a closing comment about what about something manager Francis said earlier about positions we hold.
Please.
So she's being kind. I I think the president and board should know. When President Sells said he he, when she rattled off all the positions I hold, and you said you found it how I could be a police chief, I want you to know she allows me to do it, and I think the other department heads would tell you the same thing. And Jessica gave herself like two things. I can tell you she's involved in more than that. She's just being modest on her own. But I wanted I wanted to publicly thank her, and I and she read those, because I couldn't do those positions and bring that knowledge back to this village and this board without the village manager allowing me to be involved in those organizations. So I thought, President and board of trustees, I thought you should know that.
We are blessed with a very talented and dedicated team. I appreciate it every day.
Thank you.
So we'll move on now to our next item, which is a planning and zoning commission recommendation regarding enhancing inhabitable space above garages. Director Apt, I assume you're going to do this one for us?
Yes. As you may recall, back in September, the board discussed the potential for allowing home offices above detached garages. Trustee Jisa had initiated this discussion, noting that COVID had changed the way that we're working, and he believed that the shift to working from home would be permanent, and it's forced companies to rethink how they're doing business, and that working from home is going to become more and more prevalent moving forward. He also noted that the ability to convert the space above a garage or a coach house into a home office and be able to work there would make it easier to work from home, as well as probably increase a property's value. Now, while the trustees did express some concerns about this, they did believe the issue was worthy of furthered exploration and referred the matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission did discuss this at both their September and November meetings. And after some discussion where they talked about cost, bulk standards, and some enforcement issues, the consensus of the commission was that they didn't see a compelling reason to change the zoning code to allow for habitable office areas above garages, since other options were available, and they were not in favor of increasing the allowable height for accessory buildings in residential districts, which would probably be necessary in order to allow for that second-story office area. They also noted that if there is a unique situation, the variance process is always available for residents to pursue.
Okay, so that's the that's the report, which you'd like to discuss this further. Mr. Jisa, would you like to follow up?
Yeah, I'll lead. So I watched the the meetings. Not to be antagonistic, but I couldn't disagree more. You know, I actually rent an office in Riverside. There's there's not a lot of office space. I pay $2,500 a month, not including utilities for internet, water, and everything else. So all in, I'm probably $3,000 a month. And I that frankly, that's more than my mortgage. You know, I don't really understand some of what the commissioner said during the meeting about the aesthetics, this, that, or the other, because frankly, you know, the aesthetics of someone's someone's house or garage, in my opinion, should be their own should should be their own prerogative. I have a lot of friends who don't have the financial means to go out and rent an office for three grand a month, or 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 have the opportunity to stop working in a dual-income family. And I will tell you that someone with three young kids, every morning, when we, you know, when 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 I get up, it's it's difficult, right? If I'm on meetings or doing this or that, I'm either in a dark or in the basement or in a dark corner to get started. And I think that this is unquestionably something that is going to continue. I've spoken to many real estate agents in town who all agree that the property values of the homes will go up. And I think that, you know, a couple of the commissioners talked about the cost. And quite frankly, I don't think the cost of what it would cost someone to invest in their own home is anyone's business other than the homeowner themselves, nor is the size. I truly believe that that, you know, with with the the availability that folks have of either building up, or, you know, I was trying to avoid building out, quite frankly, so that because of the the flooding issues in the village. I I not only think that it is, you know, an asset to the individuals that live there, but I think it's an asset to the village from a from a from a marketing perspective for agents or or homeowners or people selling their homes. I own a company that's, you know, global, and of my employees, we only have about 15% who are who are working coming to offices now. People don't want to go to their offices. But they're, you know, they're, it's regularly, they're regularly interrupted. And with regard to 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 managing it, you know, I don't really understand that, because people can go out and do things regardless of, you know, if people are going to break the rules, they're going to break the rules. You're not going to stop someone from doing that. And and I really think that for these families, especially the families that live in the smaller homes, three bedrooms, one and a half bath, the ability to be able to build up or build within the confines of a building within within their property, and, you know, throw a bathroom in there, throw a desk, get some internet that you can share from your building. It's from from your house on wireless. I mean, it's powerful. And and I, you know, every single couple that I've spoken to that's dual income has said the same thing, you know, it's hard. It's hard to raise kids right now. It's hard to work from home. You know, it's it's hard to to have two people working from one person at the kitchen table, one person at the dining room table. And I feel for those people. I mean, I have the luxury of of having a coach house, and I have the luxury of having a rentable space right in town. But not everyone's got that. And and I just, I think the value of this is is significant. I also think that from a marketability perspective in the town, that, you know, the value of being close to the city of Chicago is not what it once was. And when you incorporate the property tax in Cook County over other counties like Lake, DuPage, et cetera, you know, people that aren't commuting to the city don't need to go to the city anymore. So this is a way to keep Riverside, you know, mitigate our risk from from the value of being closer to the loop. It's 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 not something that I'm going to, you know, fight over, but I think that in the fairness of the homeowners of the community, we should, as a village board and a community, we should give those families that are struggling now, but will continue to be struggling, because they'll have to sell their house, buy a bigger house, this, that, or the other. It gives them flexibility. You know, there's these, there's these these pods that people can put in their backyards. There's there's a whole bunch of different alternatives. But but actually building something and creating more value in your home is something that I think that and and freedom to work is something that I think is is pretty unique. So it'd be great to hear what the other trustees think. And if anyone is working in a dual-income family, I'd love to hear with young kids. I'd love to hear here if they're having the same experiences that that the people I've talked to are. And so that's just, not everyone has the luxury of an extra bedroom, is my point.
Mr. Pollak?
Thank you, President Sells. I think we need to, perhaps we need to take a step back here and clarify what we're really talking about. Any resident that wants to build an addition onto their home that is a den or a home office is allowed to do that within the parameters of the building code and zoning code. We, people who are working at home now because of COVID are allowed to do that. That meets, you know, it presumably complies with the home occupation regulations. Home occupations are allowed under our zoning ordinance. So if the problem we're trying to address is existing homes don't have space for someone to segregate from their family for a home office, there's no code amendments needed for that. You can already, if you've got the lot area and and got available building pad space, you can you can do that right now and conduct your 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 home office from home. So then the question is, what about garages, detached accessory buildings? And I'm not clear on that. I did, and maybe Sonia can help me with that, clarify that a little bit. I see that for coach houses, historic coach houses, you're allowed to have an accessory dwelling in the coach house. I wasn't clear whether you could have an accessory office space. If the answer is no, I think that's an amendment we should definitely pursue. If you could have a dwelling in there, why not an office? You know, office is actually less obtrusive, as long as you're complying with the home occupation regulations, which don't allow you to have customers and clients coming all day long. So I'd like to see that amendment pursued. And then likewise with nonhistoric garages or coach houses, or whatever you want to call them, accessory buildings. I would not be in favor of ever allowing a second story on those buildings. I think that's pretty clear that from a design and land use perspective, plan commission and and I think most of Riverside would agree, two-story garages on most lots in Riverside is not appropriate. But if someone wanted, I guess another question for Sonia would be if if you converted a corner of your one-story garage to build an office, can you do that? And if the answer is no, then I think that might be something worth pursuing. Again, as long as they're meeting all the other regulations for accessory buildings. So it's two questions. One is, do we need to consider an amendment to allow accessory offices in historic coach houses, whether it's on the first floor or second floor? And two, do we need to pursue an amendment in order to allow someone to use their one-story garage or convert their one-story garage to create an office space in that?
Director Apt?
I don't believe we would need a text amendment to allow for the garage area to be, existing garage area be converted into an office space that we do allow people currently to be able to utilize their garages for additional office space or workspace, workbench kind of areas. People have put additions onto their garages for, you know, home studios, things like that. So I don't think any changes are needed in that regard to be able to, you know, kind of convert your garage into a usable space. For the coach houses, there may be a need for some type of amendment to clarify that an office use would also be acceptable in addition to a dwelling unit. Again, I would agree with you that that's certainly going to be less intrusive into the character and use of a neighborhood than a second dwelling unit would be. But I think I would defer to Attorney Mars, whether that distinction really needs to be made, or if it's kind of understood that it's habitable, and if somebody wanted to use it for an office rather than a dwelling unit, that it's it would be appropriate.
Just one, just one thing, Doug, just for you. So it's it's and I I hear you. One thing that I'll say, though, it's also about the privacy. So so if you're in your, you know, if you're in an addition on your home and an office, I mean, I have an outside, your kid walks in, and you're on a meeting. It's it's hard, right? And some people, for me, it's easy. Look, I'm the CEO of the company. If my kid does it, it's no problem. But if you're on a sales call, and so your kid walks in or your dog's barking, I mean, it does become a nuisance. And I understand that right now, it's it's made somewhat humorous humorous on commercials and this, that, and the other. But eventually, that's going to end. And eventually, you're going to need to create a professional experience for these people that are that are that are working with it. You know, I don't necessarily think that the aesthetics of a of a cute two-story thing are are negative. Maybe I'm in the minority there. But I but I will tell you that, like, you know, having to be in your in your, if it's an extension of the garage, and having to walk to your house to use the restroom, or, you know, like, I'm getting older, and I got to use the bathroom a lot more than I used to. So 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 having to continue to go back and forth from the house would not be fun for me. And I don't think my neighbors want me peeing in the bushes, so.
But trustee, if I may, trustee Jisa, I think I'm agreeing with you. 100% agreement with everything you're saying. What I'm saying is I think our codes already accommodate what you're asking for. For the most part, with those two exceptions I just mentioned, which is now just one exception that we may need to clarify. Otherwise, the code allows exactly what you're asking to be allowed. Again, with the need perhaps to amend the historic coach houses to allow office use as well as dwelling use.
Does it allow restrooms as well, Sonia?
Oh, in a detached building? Oh, in a detached building?
It would not.
Well, the, the, the questions are allowed in, in the landmark coach homes.
Correct.
I, I don't, they are not allowed in, in non-landmark coach. Mr. Mars, did you want to address the, the distinction about habitability versus office use?
Yeah, I mean, it's not crystal clear in the coach house section, but I would say that the fact that they can be converted to full dwelling units with kitchen and bathroom facilities. I would be fine with an interpretation consistently enforced by staff that, that the less intensive use of, of office with the bathroom facility possibly, but not necessarily having a kitchen would be fine.
I have one last thing to say.
Please.
I'm obviously very epic, you know, when I go to, to Hinsdale, and I know there's a lot of small offices in town, but when I go to Hinsdale and there's all these people that are, that are going, I, I think it will draw people in. And I mean, I look, a hundred sandwiches a day at Sawmill may not be a lot to, to some businesses, but if people are working, when they're working at home, they walk down to Sawmill to grab a sandwich and leave their office and come back, I do think it'll drive a little bit of foot traffic for folks as well. Maybe I'm wrong, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic about that.
Trustees, Doug, let's, let's let some other folks.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
To say, anybody else? Ms. Evans?
I'm generally, I sort of generally take the position of, you know, like just let people do things. So, you know, if somebody wants to put space above, like make something out of some extra space in their house, then if it's possible, then we should let them do it. And it, it just, my takeaway from the report, the memo from the commission was that this could be accomplished through a variance. It wasn't like, no, you can't do it. And it didn't seem like they wanted to change the ordinance, but you could, it was still a possibility with a variance request.
Let me weigh in on that just for a second. I, I can, and Director Abt and Mr. Mars, you can help here. It's, it's hard for me to imagine a situation, if, if what somebody wants to do is put a second story on an existing garage to make it a, an office, I don't see how they would satisfy the standards for, for variance. I don't know how they would get past the undue hardship. Because there, I probably one of their main, you know, arguments would be somehow financial, which if I am correct, the case law does not support that being, you know, an undue hardship. Ms. Abt and Mr. Mars, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think trying to get a variation for, you know, the personal reason of wanting an office above your garage would be an uphill battle.
I don't know that that was specifically what some of the commissioners were getting at. I think the idea was that if somebody wanted to do an office, they could do an addition onto their garage. If for some reason that was not feasible on their lot, whether it's an addition out of the house or an addition onto the garage, if that's not feasible on their lot because of building coverage or impervious surface or something along those lines, that that would be sort of the hardship there is, we don't, really don't have the available footprint space to be able to do an addition going out. So we need an addition to go up. And so we would need to do it above our garage to be able to accommodate that space. I think was more the leaning of that discussion and statements that were happening by a few of the commissioners.
Okay, so, so we do need to hear from everybody about this so we can decide whether or not it, it boosts forward. So what is, what, trust, what do the rest of the trustees think about this? Mr. Gallegos?
Yeah, there seems to be some way that someone wants a variance, they can get that, they can apply for that. So it should be done on a case by case basis. I would have a concern about how this would affect property or land lots, property taxes and the classification that they would have from moving from all residential to a partial business use or commercial use, which might have an effect, which could be adverse to the homeowner, I don't see them realizing that. So I, I would really not prefer moving forward with this.
Ms. Collins?
I know there's always been reluctance to allow the sidewalls to go higher on the garages because of the look and that you get these really tall buildings. And so I also have a reluctance to approve something on a blanket basis like this. I think it is better served on an individual basis. I'm just afraid if we open that door, it kind of lets it a lot.
Mr. Mars?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Director Abt talked about the reasoning of the commission on the variations, but I, I still think that, you know, the situation they're talking about, somebody wants to have an office, but they don't have the, you know, lot coverage to, to do it, that still doesn't mean you, you have a great basis for a variation to go up instead. Because at, at the end of the day, the fact that you want an office is, is a personal thing as opposed to something else. It's, it's just like saying, well, I, you know, I want to build a big addition on my house because I have a lot of kids, but I don't have the lot coverage, so I want to go up instead and, and blow through the height requirement. Well, that, that doesn't fly under case law.
Mr. Hannah?
Yeah, I, I think what we're missing here, you know, President Sales, I thought your comment about the, the seeking a variation ignores some of the realities that Trustee Jeeza is, is looking at. I mean, going back, Village Attorney Mars, you know, with building a bigger house because you have more kids, you know, right now, you know, nobody's going downtown. I, I, I go down once a week. I see maybe 10 people down there all day. You know, this is, this could become permanent. It's permanent for the foreseeable future. I, I think the way people work and the way people earn a living is changing in front of our eyes. And, and I think saying that, you know, you can go for a variance. I mean, it's the difference between, you know, working in a spare bedroom like I've been doing for the past 11 months or, you know, building a buildable space on, on your land to set up something that you can continue to make your livelihood. You know, I would just urge, you know, going back to the preservation or going back to planning and zoning and explore what they meant by getting the variation. Cause I agree with President Sales. I don't see right now how you establish the hardship.
Yeah, I mean, I, I remember watching that meeting and I don't remember that argument being made that, that, you know, that you could always, you could do this by getting a variation. So let, let me just throw one other thing into the, into the mix here. And for, I, I sent this information to all the trustees earlier today. And it, and it came up because a, a resident contacted me because he was in a situation where his in-laws were going to be moving in with them part of the year. And so he needed to be able to expand his garage so that they'd have a place to put their car. We currently have a restriction in our zoning code that does not allow accessory buildings to take up either 12% of the property or 800 square feet, whichever is less. So he was in a situation where he couldn't build his garage out because it would be more than 800 square feet, even though his lot was a quarter of an acre a lot. So, you know, trying to take into account what Trustee Jesus is saying, and I, I, I agree that I think the, the way we work is, has been changed forever. And that these kind, you know, some, these kind of, like, other small offices in people's backyards and things like that are going to be, become more and more needed. So one thing we might do is take a look at that restriction to see if it makes sense. I mean, my, my personal opinion is that as long as we don't exceed the impervious surface restriction that we have that was put in place precisely because of what Trustee Jesus said with regard to stormwater management and runoff, things like that. As long as someone is not exceeding the impervious surface restriction, I don't see why they should not be able to have another accessory structure on their property that they can use for, for a home office. And what I'm hearing is, is that there's, is that there's no appetite for taller two-story garages, but that people are sensitive to the need of having some way for folks to have office space. So that might be something we want Planning and zoning to look at. Mr. Pollak?
Yes, I, I agree. There's no appetite to build taller garages or accessory buildings, absolutely. And, and no, no way a variation can be justified for such a thing. Cause what's unique about the property that creates a hardship. So, but I think from what I'm hearing, and again, I go back to what I was saying to Trustee Jeeza before, I think we're on the same page. I think we're in total agreement. And I think our code allows everything that he has in mind, except what I just heard was that you can't have a restroom in a detached building. Maybe that's what we need to look at and that maybe that's the only thing we need to look at. Should you be allowed to, to have plumbing and, and a restroom facility and a detached accessory building, provided obviously that it's not being used as, as a for-profit rental or, or a dwelling in any way. It's just another restroom as part of your house happens to be in the detached building. I think that is definitely worth considering. And I think that alone, that's all we, perhaps all we need to do now. To trust, or to President Sales' point, maybe at the same time, we look at the size of accessory buildings to see if we need to make an adjustment to that, to further accommodate these accessory office uses. And let me wrap up by saying, I, I don't want to, as one of my favorite football coaches likes to say, I don't want to live in our fears. I don't want to not do this because we're afraid someone is going to abuse it. There, you know, that, that, that's not a reason not to do this, in my opinion. So I think that I would like to see, again, I'd like to see the Plan Commission continue to consider whether to amend the code to allow restrooms and plumbing in detached accessory building. And also at the same time, look at the size of accessory buildings and see if they think that's appropriate as is. I, I don't know the answer. I don't have an opinion on the size issue. I do lean though on the restroom plumbing issue toward allowing that.
So is, let me ask, is there agreement, general agreement among the trustees for what Mr. Pollak just recommended?
I can go for that. Yeah. Those two items?
Yes.
Yes.
And is there also general agreement that you do not want to pursue the heightened garage idea?
Yes.
Correct.
Ms. App?
I guess the other clarification would be is we do have the requirements under detached accessories that the area above a garage, so if there is a mezzanine area or something that's built above where the cars are parked, that that area can only be used for storage. Does the board want to consider removing that restriction? So that if there is space above there, that it could be used for office area, recreation area? If there is headroom, so to speak, in those areas. I mean, it would be limited obviously by the overall height. But some people do create storage areas or would be able to convert that area into some sort of usable space.
What do you think about that? I mean, it seems as long as they don't get over the current height restrictions, what differences do they make with their? I mean, they would, they would obviously would have to, to comply with our safety and building concerns. Picking their heads. So you want to look into that as well? So Ms. App, can you put those three items down for consideration by Planning and zoning?
Yes, I can.
Great. Okay. So move on now to ordinances and resolutions. First up is an ordinance approving a special use for government public service use to allow the installation of a radio antenna and support structure tower at 3860 Columbus Boulevard Riverside. That's Riverside Public Works Facility. Director Tab, are you going to lead us through this one? Mr. App, you're going to do it? Okay.
So as you heard, the village is seeking a special use for a government slash public service use in order to allow the installation of an antenna and 100-foot tall support structure at our public works facility. This property is zoned R1A and a government and public service use is classified as a special use in that district. The proposed location for the use is our public works facility over on the south side of the Displanes River. The tower and antenna would be located near the southwest corner of that site between two accessory structures. It'll be approximately 30 feet from the west property line and about 70 feet from the south property line. The public works facility is generally surrounded by trees and forest preserve property, which will help screen the tower from adjacent and nearby residential properties. Also being located adjacent to this Displanes River to the east also provides separation from residences, minimizing the visual impact of the tower. The tower and antenna is going to provide a single point water meter reading system and some point-to-point communication with the village offices. Our existing tower here at the village offices does not have sufficient capacity for additional antennas, which is why we had to seek an alternate location. This proposed location was selected because it did afford full coverage of the village at the height of 100 feet. This tower is going to be a three-legged equilateral triangle shape with a three-foot face and will have a minimal profile. It's steel structure that can be left plain or painted white to blend in with the skyline either way, which will further minimize visibility. The fire department did provide a demonstration with their 100-foot ladder truck back on December 20th before the public hearing to be able to provide members of the public as well as the commission, the ability to see what the impact of something of that height in that location would be. The public, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold their public hearing on December 21st for the special use, and they recommended approval on a vote of five to zero to approve the special use to the village board. We do have Mr. Urban here, who is our consultant for the tower, as well as Director Tab, to be able to answer any questions that you might have regarding the tower and the antenna.
So before we get into our discussion, I would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance approving special use for government public service use to allow the installation of a radio antenna and support structure at 3860 Columbus Boulevard Riverside.
I've moved.
Mr. Pollak, second by?
Second.
I'm Ms. Collins. Discussion questions? Ms. Evans? Please.
So the tower will hold equipment that will allow us to, will allow for more accurate water meter reading, right? Is that what we're going for?
Yeah, the.
Without having to drive through town?
Right. The main purpose of the tower is to use it as an AMI system for reading water meters. So currently we read water meters, your individual water meters every two months. And we do an alternating pattern or cycle throughout the village. So this tower will allow us to read, actually it'll, it'll pull reads four times a day. So we can notify residents if they do have a leak in a more efficient manner as opposed to having to wait potentially 60 days. But, you know, the point of the height is to get coverage of the whole town from one specific point without having to do multiple antennas throughout town. But yeah, the primary use is for the reading of water meters. And then a secondary would be the point-to-point with the village hall for increased data speed to the public works facility.
Thank you.
If I can follow up on the, on that, that point, Director Tab, how exactly will, will, will the analysis be done on an ongoing basis? So let's say somebody does have a, like a leak in their, in their, their house somewhere. So you're pulling this information four times a day. How are you going to flag? And, you know, that, that, that there's a problem in a particular home?
Sure, there's, there's a software package that all the data is fed into and there's parameters within the software that we set. You know, we can, for example, between the hours of midnight and 5:00 AM, if the flow exceeds, you know, a quart of gallon per minute for any given reason in the morning or throughout the night, it'll create a report. And when we come into the office in the morning, we can print out a report and it will flag or identify all these addresses that have this particular parameter met. So then we can take that data and we can either, you know, the village likes. And we can either, um, you know, if the village likes to do a customer portal, we can email, text. Call if need be the resident and advise them, uh, we noticed abnormal usage. Between these hours, uh, you know, perhaps. They do wash at night and it's, it's normal and there's no issue. But for those that are, are sleeping and, you know, there's no intended water use, we would be able to advise them of that, you know. Ideally, that following day as opposed to waiting potentially the 60 days between, uh, water reads.
Other questions? Trustees.
Yeah, I, I have a comment of questions. So, I mean, this is for, and Director Tab knows is I've had a couple. Situations where my water bill has gone crazy and I, and I, if I, had I known that earlier, it would be fantastic. I just find it amazing. The technology can do this. I think it's really cool, but I, one, one question. Is, and again, so I'm all for it, but, but. Is it possible to have the tower be brown instead of silver? Or is that like a mechanical functionality, you know?
Well, I wouldn't say it's a me, a mechanical function of it, but if you were to look at, uh, you know, a silverish galvanized color. With a sky backdrop to it, it would stick out. Less if, and if it were to be brown, uh, now we're assuming that there's no trees in front of it because if there's trees, then it might resemble the tree, but. Uh, in the general sense, uh, a silver structure with a sky backdrop would probably be. Less noticeable than a brown structure with a sky backdrop.
Yeah, okay. Is, is the husband of a local birder? I, I imagine an eagle's nest on the top of it, you know?
Following up on that, if I, I, I mean, my, my main, I mean, obviously the, the practical benefits of, of this are obvious, especially. I, I think the point to what communication with, uh, our servers is, as you said, Director Tab, is important in some ways as the other. But I am concerned about the aesthetic impact of it. Uh, that is a particular, particularly beautiful stretch of river. Right there, uh, on Riverside Road. So, you know, I would just ask that, that all due consideration be given to, to try to find a way to make this as. As aesthetically inconspicuous as possible. Uh, was there a determination made on whether a light would be needed, given its height?
Uh, we can welcome in, uh, Ed Urban if he's still on.
Yep, I'm here.
There he is. He was, uh, sorry, I lost you there for a second. Uh, he was going to do some research and try to find that information out. Have you, were you able to do that?
So typically a tower under 190 feet, uh, does not require any lighting whatsoever. Unless it's in a glide path for a, uh, a aviation facility. We did a initial analysis and we did not see that it was within a glide path. We actually did file a request for FAA determination, which will be a formal process. I did start that, uh, just because I know it takes them a while to get that, uh, get that going. But, uh, I would anticipate that no lighting is necessary. We just completed two towers that are going to be identical in structure, uh, to this tower for the village of Buffalo Grove. And they are very close to, uh, Chicago Executive Airport and they did not require lighting at all. From the aesthetics, uh, the galvanized steel towers, they really do blend in. I know I provided the staff with photographs of the Buffalo Grove facility for the. Zoning committee hearing and, uh, in, in both of those areas, the towers were within. 200 feet of residential areas and, and they really do look very aesthetically pleasing. They, uh, compared to what was there in Buffalo Grove. Guide towers and the rooftops and the fire stations, uh, these are much less, uh, obtrusive.
You want President sells, I do have some pictures that Director Tab took of the, um, demonstration back in December that I can share my screen if.
That'd be great.
To see those.
Please.
Okay.
Take a look.
See if I can master this here.
And as Director App was pulling these up, uh. I should mention that during the winter months when there's no leaves on trees, uh, there are. If you're not looking for it, uh, you may never even see it. And even when you are trying to, for those that were able to witness the demonstration that we did. Uh, you could see the little red arrow pointing at the, that's the ladder in the background there. So obviously if, when those leaves or those trees are leafed out. You know, there, you won't be seeing anything. And even at this point with no leaves, you would really have to kind of strain the eye to. Pick that thing out.
And Director Kama, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, it's actually going to be farther east. Than where the demonstration was. Is, is that right?
The, uh, where the ladder currently is placed in this picture, it'll be 30, approximately 30 feet west of where the ladder. Just laid out. Yep. We just couldn't fit the truck into the little, uh, little spot we were proposing for the tower.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
So, uh, further comments, questions, concerns? Ms. Evans?
Yeah, I have one more question. Um. So are we expecting a significant difference in, um, water bills with the new? The, um, the more accurate reading?
Well.
Bills will go up? Would you think they'll be about the same?
What I would say to that.
Very expensive water in town.
Right. So it's kind of twofold. On one hand, we're hoping to, uh, no, this would be the first step to a meter replacement program. And that was, that was discussed at a previous meeting, uh, last fall. Of course, with new meters comes more accurate meters. The meters that are installed in homes now, they're mechanical and as they age. Uh, they become less accurate. That's just a fact. So the new meters will be more accurate. Which may or may not increase the water bill. That being said, with the ability to monitor water usage, either, um. From our office or from a consumer portal. Water habits may change. So, um. I don't want to say your bill will go up. I don't want to say your bill will stay the same because it depends on everyone's water habits. And how, uh, how much they monitor it and their toilets and there's a lot of factors that come into play with regards to water bills. But it won't be because of a tower that your water bills go up.
Well, no, I know it won't be because of the tower. It'll be because more accurate readings. So.
Right.
We might find that people have been using more water all along and.
Well, it, you know, at, at the same time, that is also a source of revenue that the village is missing out on.
I know, I understand. It's just not going to make people very happy.
They may not buy that, but, um, that is the fact.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Hi.
Trustee Evans. Trustee Gallagos.
Hi.
Trustee Hannan.
Hi.
Trustee Jesus.
Hi.
Trustee Pollak.
Hi.
Motion carries. Mr. Urban, thank you very much for taking time to be with us here tonight and answer our questions. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Okay, we'll move on now, uh, to our next item, which is a resolution approving and authorizing acceptance. Of a proposal from Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited to perform professional engineering services as the village engineer for the village of Riverside. Mr.
I will dig in this one. Yep. Uh, in October 2020, the village Riverside sought qualification statements from licensed professional engineering firms as part of their quest for qualifications. The village received qualification statements from seven engineering firms and used this quality qualifications-based evaluation selection process. To help determine which firms would be moving on to the interview portion of the process. Seven firms submitted proposals and ultimately three, three were chosen to move on. On December 8th, 2020, a selection committee comprised of myself. The Director of Finance and Director of Community Development interviewed the three selected engineering firms. Once completed, the selection committee evaluated elements such as project experience, staff capabilities. Grant experience, customer service expectations, and the familiarity with the village's historical significance. After thorough evaluation, the selection committee. Recommends Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited to provide engineering services to the village of Riverside. Based on the firm's qualifications, knowledge and understanding of the village's current infrastructure. And having the personnel required to meet the village's future engineering requirements. The attorney reviewed contract is for a two-year term with one-year automatic renewals thereafter. The contract may be broken, uh, if decided upon with a 30-day written notice prior to the one-year auto renewal. Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited has also agreed to hold the race for the initial two-year term of the contract. With the rates eligible for a 5% increase thereafter. If anyone has any questions regarding that, I will, uh, take them at this time.
I said first, let's, uh, I'd ask for a motion to approve a resolution approving and authorizing acceptance of a proposal from Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited. To perform professional engineering services at, as the village engineer for the Riverside. Need a motion?
So moved.
By Ms. Collins.
Second.
Was that, I think Mr. Pollak got there first. Hey, uh, any questions for Director Tab? Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Hi.
Trustee Evans.
Hi.
Trustee Gallagos.
Hi.
Trustee Hannan.
Hi.
Trustee Jesus.
Hi.
Trustee Pollak.
Hi.
Motion carries. And I will just say, I've, I've had the opportunity to work with, with Christopher Burke Engineering now for, for eight years and. They have provided excellent service to our village and. I'm really delighted that they're going to be continuing for at least the next couple of years. Go back to our agenda here. I think that's it for this evening. Are, is there any new business this evening? Hearing none, uh, we do have need for an executive session this evening to, to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of village property. Uh, and also to discuss pending probable or imminent litigation. So I would ask for motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene and no further act final action will be taken.
So moved.
Oh, you know what? I forgot. Mr. Morris, you need to go through the. The COVID ritual in terms of all hearing one another before we. Adjourn.
Not necessarily. As long as anyone hasn't had any issues, um, I think we're good.
Okay, so we had a motion for Mr. Gallagos. Second from. Mr. Hannah. Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Hi.
Trustee Evans.
Hi.
Trustee Gallagos.
Hi.
Trustee Hannan.
Hi.
Trustee Jesus.
Hi.
Trustee Pollak.
Hi.
Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.